Like to call the order. The August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. City of Lemoore Planning Commission at five thirty-six P M. First, we'd like to start with a public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each and is requested that no comments be made during this period on items of the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the commission secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda. Once the item has been called and the chair opens the items to the public. So at this time, is there anybody from the audience or the public that would like to make a comment? Christie, anything come in email? Anything like that? No? Okay. Let it reflect that we have no public comment.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me, I just wanted to let you know on the uh agenda, we have to do the roll call.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. I jumped ahead.
Thanks, Bob. I should have caught that.
All right, let's start with the roll call. So, uh. Commissioner Brewer. Here. Mister Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Mead.
Here.
Commissioner Etchegon.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I am here. Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to approval of minutes. Uh approval of minutes from the regular meeting July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Or sorry. Any public comment on the uh regular meeting approval of minutes from July tenth? What's that? Oh. And there's a correction on that real quick.
Right there.
There it is. Yeah, item number four, the correction is approval of minutes. It says July tenth. It should say May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Christie? Okay. Any public comment on the minutes? No? All right. Any motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the uh discussed change.
Okay.
Second.
Who was at the second? Okay. All right, we have a first to approve the minutes by. Commissioner Etchegon to approve and a second by Commissioner Mead. Let's do a uh roll call on this. So approval of minutes, Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
And Commissioner Etchegon.
Aye.
And I um I as well. Okay. We're gonna move to item number five. Report and recommendation. A request by Lennar Homes of California, Inc. To extend approval of vesting tentative subdivision map number two thousand seventeen dash zero one. Uh Reverie Track nine twenty and accompanying planning entitlements for one year. That's A P N zero two one five seven zero 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 one and zero two one five six zero 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 one.
Good evening, commissioners. Um I received a request um in July from Lennar Homes uh to extend the final map or the tentative subdivision map for another year. As you know, they came to us last July and um received a second extension. They have been working on their final map. It did go to city council after we uh approved the second extension and um the final map was approved by the city council. It just has not been recorded yet. Um so staff fully uh supports the um added year to allow them to get things together and get the map signed and and what have you and record it. Um they do plan on um moving forward with phase two of the subdivision. Um it's just matter of time and. There any questions?
Any questions or anything? Okay. Open to the audience. Any questions? No? Okay, do I have a motion? To approve. Or any discussion among commissioners?
Do we, do we have any idea when they, are they targeting a date that they might start?
Uh the, I have a representative for the developer here that can speak to that. Um I will say that that uh our ordinance does allow for six one-year discretionary extensions, so this is in the realm of what our ordinance says, but I'll let the developer.
Okay, it's just more out of curiosity than anything.
Good evening. My name is Tom Davis with Lennar Homes. Um to answer the question, our schedule right now is looking like first of the year. We may be starting again to do grading and those kind of things. We're working on some additional studies out there before we get going, but uh we're full speed ahead. We're not stopping. We're just not able to start ground movement yet without getting all the other studies done. But more or less first of the year, we probably will start moving dirt again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, I have a question. You have, excuse me, you have two structures going up now? I assume they're for your offices such temporarily?
Those would be either the model homes or for our construction crew to stay on. And um basically we stopped working on all of that until we get the rest of the studies completed and then we can start back up again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. No comment from the public? Like to entertain a motion from the commissioners? Oh, yes, you approach 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 the podium.
The contract, uh the dirt works being done, but where's the location at? That this is happening.
That it's happening? What we can do is ask us some questions and we can have the representative come back up and answer that.
Okay.
So, thank you. Okay.
The subdivision is located at Hanford and Mona Road and eighteen and three quarters. It's just north of Hanford and Mona Road. It's actually phase two of the Reverie subdivision. With what?
Nothing to do with that.
No, 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 no. This is a subdivision that that was already a tentative map was approved.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the public? No? Commissioners?
I'm moving. We approved the one-year extension as requested.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mead and a second by Commissioner Brewer to ex- to extend the um send the approval of the tentative subdivision map. Um. Let's see, we'll do a call. Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
And Commissioner Etchegon.
Aye.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I'm I also. Okay, moving on to item number six. This is a public hearing. Um just to let the audience know that normally we read through the whole thing. There's a lot here, so I'll read the first sentence and then we'll go from there. Public hearing. Zone map amendment number twenty twenty-three dash zero two and general plan amendment number two zero two-three dash zero two. Changes initiated by the city of Lemoore to eliminate the mixed-use designation and the M U zoning from the general plan and zoning maps of the north side of Hanford and Mona Road east of Lemoore Avenue. All right, Steve.
Good evening, Steve Brandt, city planner. I'm, I'm gonna start actually by making some general comments that are gonna apply to all of the rest of the items on the agenda, six through eleven, the public hearings at least. So there, in a way, they're all related. Uh this started um actually a few years ago. Um there was the, the state made available uh some grant money to do uh planning that would um increase cities' ability to approve housing projects. So we um I was actually working with Julie Judy Hallwell at the time. We put together an agenda of of items of things that we would think we could do to change our zoning ordinance or to change other codes or other things on the zoning map that would, that we thought would would improve the city's ability to approve housing. Uh one of the things that we looked at was the mixed-use zone that's on the zoning map. And we noted that I think maybe there was one small project, but there were hardly any projects that had been ever been proposed or built in the mixed-use zone and there are a number of places around the city. So that was put into the grant application to say we're gonna make it some changes to this and we'll, we'll study them and we'll determine what the more appropriate zone would be, but the idea was that um what the result would be, there'd be more land zoned for housing as a result of it. So that was the goal of the grant. Um there's other text changes that we'll get to in item number ten that we'll go through. But wanted to give you that background. Um. It uh it did take a while to get to this point. Uh we had COVID. Everything got put on hold, the grants, the grant money, the approvals, the um the deadlines got extended, but we're, we're within our, our timeframe here uh to bring this to you. We've had, as you know, I believe it's three study sessions about these items with, with your commission. We've also had three study sessions with the city council, so um. So I'm gonna go through these uh kind of generally, but if you have specific questions or you wanna dive into something more in more detail, I'm happy to to do that with you. So um focusing on item number six, this is a uh general plan amendment and a zone map amendment that um is on the north side of Hanford and Mona Road east of Lemoore Avenue. There's um Christie's got the general location there on the map. And then if you zoom in, there's um go to the next one or no, go to the next page. For the map, I'm sorry. So the, the map on the left is the existing general plan map and you see the purple area is zoned to mixed use. The map on the right is what we're proposing to make the change to. So the, the pink area is professional office or would be professional office. The orange is medium-density residential. So currently, there's a church on the site that's medium, that would be medium-density residential, which church is an allowed use in that zone. And there's a laundromat in the site that would be zoned office and there that is also an allowed use in that uh professional office zone. So so the, the new zones would not make any, would not change the status of any existing um uses there. Um but it would, and they're smaller sites, so it's not gonna change the housing capability a lot, but as we said, one of our goals was to look at every mixed-use zone and see if there's a better zone for it. And so um our proposal would on this site would be to make those changes. Uh we did not have, we, we put out notices twice on all of these maps. Um and also, we put them out by registered mail so that we make sure that, that people receive them. And we did not have any comments come in on, on this particular uh general plan amendment and zone change. Oh, for, on all of these? Oh, they, oh, okay. So apparently we, we got all the notices back. The return receipt, which I'm not sure what that means, cuz that's the same address that this tax collector sends the tax bill to. Oh, they, oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody.
I misunderstood you. So everybody, we seen, everyone did get the, the notice. So I'm gonna go through these one at a time. We have a separate resolution for each one. So I guess that we'll need to have a public hearing for each particular one.
Yeah. So the one you went over right now is just the Hanford and Mona Beverly Drive location, just those.
Just that one. We'll go through the others. We'll go through the others as seven, eight, nine.
Okay, and the one right on the corner, you know, the health centers, is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. And that's still zoned for that, what you're, the proposed change, correct?
Yes, that would still be an allowed use.
Commissioners, any questions? No? Okay, I'm gonna open it to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, come on up to the podium. What's that?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, public here. Open the public hearing at five forty-six. Thank you.
Hi, um my name is Terry Donzel. I live on the south end of that zoning. And they're saying that they sent out numerous um I guess requests or whatever that the, we've received one last week. That's it. Or two weeks ago, that's the only one that we've received. This is, the reason we're here is cuz this is the first time that we've actually heard about this when we got it in the in the mail. So um I, my question is who sent all these out if they sent out numerous?
So I sent out the notices. Um they were, the notices were sent certified mail to the property owners multiple times. Um the, when we have a public hearing, we are required to send an actual public hearing notice to all property owners within three hundred foot radius. So that's why you only received one notification if you were not, if you're not one of the, just if you're not one of the property owners. So if, if the property owner should have received two notices.
Residents around that area a little away from that.
Anybody three hundred feet from those properties, we, we submitted a, a request from Kings County Assessor's Office and anybody within, they give us the list of property owners and a map of anyone that, of all the property owners within three hundred feet of those properties so that you, you're notified. And you wanna come up in.
Okay, my name is Richard Navarro. And I live on back of that lot that you guys are trying to change. I don't know what, what it is. I've never been to one of these, so I'm kinda a little bit nervous. What are you gonna do? Kinda excuse me a little bit.
That's okay.
Now, last year, last year, I had homeless people living by the laundry mat under a tree and so I had to make my fence seven feet high. So nobody be looking in my yard. Now, what is this zoning that you guys wanna change? What does it do to my property is what I wanna know. I've never been to one of these, so and I didn't get a notice. And I live four inches.
Gotcha. Well, if that's your question, we'll have one of the staff members answer that.
Okay.
Do that for us. So what will it, so your question is what would it do to your?
What is it gonna do to my property if uh you guys change the zoning or whatever?
So, so your property is not one of those that's getting changed, is that correct?
No, I live right in back of that property. I live between the laundry mat and the church.
Yeah.
And I'm in front of that empty lot.
Well, I don't know if I can answer for staff or if staff wants to answer. It, it wouldn't change anything with your property, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, does it change your zoning? Does it?
No, cuz you hear so, you hear so much, you know, you hear so many things that
Yeah.
You know, something like they wanna put a homeless shelter or something like this. I've heard that one.
Well, I don't think that would be zoned for that. Is that correct, Steve?
Anyway, I'm, that's the reason.
No, I understand.
To ask.
I'll, I'll tell you what, the, the reason, and again, I don't mean to speak for staff and please stop me if I'm overreaching here. The big reason is it is sitting empty and part of the comment that you had made was homeless people living out there. The whole reason of changing the zoning is so it doesn't sit empty. Unfortunately, the home, the landowners that have had this have not had uh people approached them to develop, build, or do anything with it. Hopefully, this might solve that.
What does the owner say about it? I mean, I met the owner of the property. Do you want to change this?
What's that again?
Do you want to change the zoning on this property?
I don't know. That's why we have a public like this. So and they probably did talk to staff. I don't know if you talked with staff. I mean.
Yeah, cuz I, I know the man, I know the man.
Not, not the particular owner. Yeah. So it sounds like staff hasn't had that particular owner contact them or anything about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you know if they're here or anything like that?
Uh, no, I, I don't see him anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cuz I've talked to him before and he's the one that owns the church.
Yeah, okay.
And the empty lot cuz he mows it all the time.
Yeah. Okay.
So, cuz I was looking for him cuz I was gonna ask him, you know, what is going on with this?
Yeah. Well, the big change about this and the reason we're going through it step by step and, and then the reason we have this, so people like you can have those comments and ask us questions, ask the staff and everything like that. Hopefully alleviating concerns that you have.
Okay.
So.
Is this the first meeting on this property or is it gonna be some more?
This is not the first one, right? We've had multiple.
Well, I've never received the letter when she said there, two letters were, you know, and we're the homeowners. So that's the reason why. You know, kinda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for that about the letters. I'm sorry.
All right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public on this particular zone? No? Okay. Back to commissioners, any comments or concerns?
Close, close public hearing.
Oh, sorry, closed public hearing. At?
Five fifty-two.
Five fifty-two, thank you.
So I will address one of the questions. Um the, the role of the planning commission here tonight is to make a recommendation to the city council. That's what your resolutions are all doing on each of these items. The city council has the final decision and they will be holding a public hearing we're planning for on September fifth.
Okay.
And notices will go out again based on the property owner tax rolls.
Okay, gotcha. And, and staff probably keeps record of all mails that's returned and showing certificates being sent out or, yeah, okay. Great. All right. All right, commissioners, anything? Any questions for Steve? No?
I don't think so.
All right, like the entertainment motion? Or let me actually get back up here, sorry. Entertain a motion for item number six for the zone map amendment?
Can I make a motion that we adopt uh? I think I'm on the right one. Resolution number twenty twenty-three oh seven? Recommending approval of the zone map amendment number twenty twenty-three zero two and the general plan amendment number twenty twenty-three oh two in accordance with the findings in the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. Have a first by Commissioner Mead and a second, oh, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Etchegon and a second by Commissioner Brewer. So how do you vote? Uh Commissioner Etchegon?
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Mead?
Aye.
And I am Commissioner Couch and I vote aye as well. All right, we will move on to item number seven, public hearing, zone map amendment number two zero two-three dash zero three and general plan amendment number two zero two-three dash zero three. Changes initiated by the city of Lemoore to eliminate the mixed-use designation and M U zoning from the general planning zoning maps in the vicinity of Lemoore Avenue and Cinnamon Drive. Steve?
Yes, thank you again. So this is uh similar to the, to the first one. It's same, same background as the first. This area is along uh is near the intersection of Lemoore Avenue and Cinnamon Drive. There are several sites that are uh zoned and designated mixed-use in this area that are vacant. One of them's a long triangular area north of the railroad tracks. And then the other one is along the north side of Cinnamon Drive um between the commercial area and the school. Um there are also some existing developed sites that are zoned mixed-use along the east side of Lemoore Avenue. So for those existing sites and the sites along Lemoore Avenue, we thought it was appropriate to rezone those to neighborhood commercial. And that would be similar to the other commercial sites that are on the other corners of Lemoore Avenue and Cinnamon Drive. Uh but then the vacant sites would be zoned, uh rezoned high-density residential which would allow for apartment complex type development in the future. And that's similar to other development that's already existing along the south side of Cinnamon Drive there. So um this one has the potential to significantly increase the potential for more housing, especially in, right in the center of the city, near commercial, near schools. And so it seemed like it was an appropriate change. The mixed-use zone um does allow for commercial uses, but again, like I said, we haven't seen anybody take advantage of it. Uh there are, they do have, mixed-use zone does have different development standards and that may be one of the reasons why is that people just didn't wanna follow those development standards, but um on this site, I also, I don't recall that we received any phone calls from any of the property owners on this site. Yeah. What's what? Did you have, okay, so on the cinnamon drive site, um someone did call and they were, so it said they were support, supportive of the change.
Do you know if it was the actual property owner or just somebody in the area?
On that, I don't think it was that site. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we're not sure.
Okay, but you did have, they were in a uh agree.
We didn't have anybody that's opposed, that's opposed.
Okay, opposed, yeah.
And no neighbors have called in.
Okay. So just for, just in case the audience wants to know, so when it goes to high density, what's an example of high density? Is that apartment?
It's an apartment complex, usually a two-story apartment complex.
Okay. Okay, any questions or anything from the commission commissioners? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
We will open it to the public at five fifty-eight. If there's anybody from the public that has any comments or questions on this particular zoning change at this area. Okay. And then Christie, you just mentioned there was one phone call. And that was it. Okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, nobody from the public or anything? We'll close that at five fifty-nine. And any discussion among the commissioners?
I just noticed that um on the on the lot uh north of Cinnamon. So it's single-family homes to the north of that. And there's a street. Obviously, when that was built, it looks like they were intending on continuing south. And the street just stops there. So what, what's gonna happen with that street if that becomes the high density, if it becomes apartment complexes?
Well, I, I can only speculate because we don't have a site plan. We don't know how it would look. Uh as a as a rule, I, or kind of just good practice, I don't like designs where multifamily has to drive through single-family neighborhoods to get to a major street. So I wouldn't I would be hesitant to look at something where that was the, you know, a major entrance exit area. Um but given that there's a stub street there, I could see a possibility where the fire department might want emergency access through there to get to the backside of the, of the apartment complex. That would make sense to me. But again, I'm just throwing out speculations as to how the site might develop. Uh it could also just be blocked off and just be a stub street forever.
So I have a question about that, though. If you look at this map, is it a Parks and Recreation little strip above that Cinnamon Drive?
You know, there is something there and we talked to Parks about that. Is there a, there's some type of easement? That's owned by the city.
See the screen strip right here?
Yeah, yeah.
And there's, there is a um with that easement, a little tra- there is like a little trail to get to the backside of the school.
But that, that's PG&E.
Is it PG&E?
Is that what that is probably? Okay.
When they built the Catholic Church, they had an issue with where the lines were. So that's a PG&E's easement.
Easement? Okay, well, then it yeah, then I'm curious as to why it's there, but.
That, that easement runs from nineteenth down through eighteenth through the Catholic Church right behind the. Right behind the school. And where that road dead ends right there and that. Subdivision is just blockaded off. Which is not the only. Blockaded area. Over in that part of town. Where the street just stops. And without having a cul-de-sac at the end.
Yeah.
Right. Over the years. There there have. Cause I had comments inquiries about. Developing that. And one of the questions was, can we put a strip of houses down? The east side of that street and bring it all the way up to cinnamon. Uh. The answer was, well, the planning commission is going to answer that one. Not because I was, well, school district was property owner. We got the questions.
Okay.
I look at this and I think. I I think the. People living there in the single family homes. Would like. Single family homes to go up. But. When you get up to cinnamon across the street. Is high density again. So I I look at this and then with the school where I think that. The way that. You're proposing they be zone is perfect.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? Discussion? No? Okay. At this time, like to open a motion. For item number seven.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight. Recommending approval of the zone map amendment number twenty twenty-three zero three. And the general plan amendment number twenty twenty-three zero three. In accordance with the findings in the resolution.
There you go. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Right. Okay, we have a first and a second for item number seven, public hearing for zoning, zone map amendment number twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Let's go ahead and do a vote. Uh, Commissioner Exagone?
Hi.
Commissioner Brewer?
Hi.
Commissioner Clement?
Hi.
Commissioner Mead?
Hi.
And I'm Commissioner Couch and I vote aye as well. Right, we're going to move on to number eight. Public hearing. Zone map amendment number twenty twenty-three dash zero four and general plan amendment number twenty twenty-three zero four. Changes initiated by the city Lamore to eliminate the mixed use designation and MU zoning. From the general plan and zoning maps in the vicinity of Bush and D Streets. Steve?
Yes, thank you, um. As you said, this is the area. Around the intersection of Bush and D Street. There's the, all four corners are currently zoned mixed use. Uh, this one probably took the most work and analysis and looking at and and also talking to property owners. I think we've talked to. Most of the property owners. That have vacant land in this area. Uh, that's being proposed for a change as well as some of the others. I talked to somebody from the fleet reserve just just today. And. Generally, everyone is. Is supportive. There is one person which I'm going to talk about, um, that is gonna that. Would prefer a different zone than what we're proposing. So I'm going to go through that in a second. But I just wanted to point out first that if you look at the general plan map. There's an area that's outside the city that's mixed use. Um, there at the bottom right, and that would be proposed to change to neighborhood commercial. Which is similar to what's to the east of it. Um, on the zoning map, since that land isn't inside the city yet. It's not should be shown on the zone map. So that's that's why there's that difference. But the general plan amendment would still change that to neighborhood commercial. Um, in the area that's within the city. There's one property owner that owns a number of the vacant parcels. That are kind of like on the west part of this. And so in working with him, he's got some currently some me that's a Mr. Olivera. Uh, representing, um. Some medium density residential and then the rest mixed use. He agreed to the concept of. Putting neighborhood commercial along this along D Street and then having the high density residential in the back. Which, um. Would give him what he wants, which is more commercial on D Street, but then also increases the potential for housing because of the higher density. And and it makes sense in that area that it's not, you know, right on D Street. Um, but still has, uh, Bush Street access, which is a, which is a decent sized street. Uh, the PO zone, that's. Those sites, that's the Adventist Health site, the Fleet Reserve and the, uh, swim school. Uh, home. And talked to all three of those at certain points and explained to them what we're doing. Once I explained it, they didn't have an issue with with this. Um, the areas that we're proposing for me medium density residential on both sides of Daphne, that's, um. Controlled by the same party. I spoke with Mr. Crisp, um, a week or two ago about that. And actually, he did come to the. Last planning or city council study session as well. And spoke about wanting to have that as neighborhood commercial. Instead of medium density residential. Obviously, that would change the ability to build housings, which would go against our overall goals. But. Even if the commission chose to recommend neighborhood commercial. Um, we would still have a net increase with all four of these changes that we're making. So it wouldn't be. You know, wouldn't totally go against the goals of the overall project, so. So he wanted to make that request that it would be neighborhood commercial instead of medium density residential. Whatever you decide as your recommendation, that's what we will then take to the council as the. Staff slash planning commission recommendation. Um, I believe that's all I have for that one.
So quick question, just clarify again for the audience. So we talked about high density, low density would be like a subdivision or something like?
Low density would be houses, like single family houses in a subdivision. Medium density would be more like fourplexes duplexes.
Okay.
Things like that.
Gotcha. Okay, any questions or anything from the commission?
Public hearing.
Okay. Right, like to open a. Public hearing at six oh eight PM. Anybody in the audience? Has any questions?
My name is Don Segal. I live at six eighty-four. Oleander, that's sort of almost in the middle, middle of that. And what I see that. Needs, I think, further consideration is the fact that we are already going to have. Super high density. For affordable. Living, which is important that we have those those kinds of things. But then to butt up some additional high density there, I think is a mistake. And I think that should be reconsidered that that portion of it. Should be considered for medium density. That would be much better use of that. Otherwise, you're going to get such a huge concentration there. It's going to make a difficult area to maintain.
Good evening, how are you? Jim Crisp, I do represent the two parcels, um, east and west of. Daffy Street that have been designated for medium residential. I, um. Uh, spoke to the study session. They seem to agree that, uh, these are. Far too small to try to zone into a residential category. I think they make. Much more sense as a neighborhood, uh, commercial. And it's. It's on that track and it. Ties together everything else around it. I do have support from Mr. Olivera to the. Uh, south of me, uh, his. His are also being zoned neighborhood, uh, uh, commercial, and I would appreciate the, uh, client, client commissions. Consideration to change to neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
So you, you own a lot?
Yes, sir.
The the small lot on the opposite side of Daphne there too. Just said on the, on the east side also.
Yes, sir, the three point four nine and the one point zero nine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Hi, I'm Doug McCann, president of the Fleet Reserve Association on D Street. Got a few questions. How's this going to affect our property tax? I think you already answered that question this morning. Uh, what does Lamore gain from these zone changes? As far as you you're you're making room to build more, right? Basically. My concern is. Low income housing going up across the street from the fleet reserve. Cause it's now changing to commercial. Is that the case? Is that the plan?
Instead of, instead of the low income housing?
Is that the plan to build low income housing there across the street by the best western across the street from the fleet? That is not the intent?
No.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So Steve, back to his questions. He talked about property tax. And I think he said you talked to him about that this morning.
Yeah, we talked this morning. The property tax does not change it when zones change.
Yeah.
That's, uh, been the case since proposition thirteen was adopted in the seventies. So property tax is based on. They they reassess your property when you sell the property. And so the new person gets that gets the bump.
Yeah, okay. And then one other question he has is what what do what does the city gain?
Well, I mean. We'd like the sites. To get built. We want to, we want the city to grow and and like I said at the beginning, we just noticed the trend of. Nothing is happening in the mixed use zones. And so we wanted to. Basically. Take them off the map and and try something different. So, um. As. As it's clear on this site, some of the sites are already developed, so we had to figure out, well, what makes sense then for zoning? We can't do what's called spot zoning and just, you know, pick. Pick little zones for each parcel. But, uh. But just looking at what's already there and what is allowed in all the the different zones that we have, we we thought that this was the. The best way to go. Uh, regarding the comments about. The. Medium density residential going to neighborhood commercial. Again, I think that's that's your call. If you think that's a better use, um, we can put that in the recommendation and and bring that forward to council. The high density going to medium density, I did a quick calculation. Again, these numbers are based on average. Densities because we don't know exactly what somebody is going to propose in the future, but. Um, the difference between. High density and medium density for that size of site. Would be. Potentially hundred and fourteen units versus. Um, quick math here. Shoot, I should have done it ahead of time. Uh. Eighty-nine units, so twenty-five unit difference.
Twenty-five units less.
Twenty-five units less.
Do we still meet or have a positive?
We still have a positive overall, uh, but it's getting, but it's getting lower.
Getting lower. So if we, so the twenty-five difference, but what if we also went down to neighborhood commercial? At the two. Areas right there. With. What if you factor both of those in?
That would be a sixty-one. Unit, so. Twenty-five, sixty-one. We're still in the positive, uh, mainly because of the the last item that you recommended. So the overall we had. Uh, ten to. Six. We're at two forty-two, so we'd be down to one. Um, sixty something.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay, like to close.
If you do want to make it, I'm sorry, if you do want to make a change, then you need to specifically address that in your motion.
Gotcha.
Okay. So, so Mr. Crisp, you were, you you want it to be neighborhood commercial, correct? Yeah, that's what, okay. I I don't think what he's asking is unreasonable at all, considering that. Everything around there is going to be neighborhood commercial anyway, and that. Those lots are shaped kind of weird to begin with. The other. Discussion, are we done with public comment? I'm sorry.
Hold on real quick. Hey, is there any other public comment or? Okay. Like to close public comment at six sixteen. And open it up to the commissioners for discussion. Was like to continue.
Okay, like I said, I think that Mr. Mr. Crisp's properties being neighborhood commercial. Is, it sounds reasonable to me. The high density residential back. When we're looking at. The proposed project that's going to go with Smith and Bush. And what we saw as far as traffic there. And then when I add more and less. They continue, um, I forget what street that is. To, that goes back.
Oleander.
The dead ends.
Oleander?
Oleander. Unless they extended Oleander. I think it might be better if it was medium residential. Okay, lower the traffic because it's. That could become a real traffic nightmare if. You've got everybody trying to get out Oleander on the. Smith. But they may have some. And entrance exit on Bush too, but. That's heavy. Heavy traffic street too. And what do you guys think?
This is actually what I like. It's when the public comes and they talk to us. And.
Right.
They tell us, hey, I'm actually the owner of this property and this is the like and staff. You know, our city planner and stuff says, hey. You know. We're good if we want to recommend that.
And with different take, when I look at the map here. The residential part. On Daphne. Is split by the road. With one piece being considerably larger than the other. Okay, and it would make sense to me. To consider. What happened to the map here?
Oh, sorry, sorry, they moved it.
Go right there. Yeah, right there. That if that that small orange piece in the medium density. Was moved to neighborhood commercial. But the larger piece. On. The west side. Could remain as medium density. That makes sense to me in terms of. How the properties were zoned together. Fit.
Okay.
So you're saying. Medium density of the smaller one on the east side. Is that correct? I'm sorry, neighborhood commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
So that neighborhood commercial. Bush. Daphne. Up to the old part that's already developed. That's the small piece.
So why, why would you want to keep that? Medium density with other businesses in that area? What's what's your thoughts on that?
That piece?
No, the the bigger.
On the west.
The one on the west. You're saying keep that medium density? I, my, my thoughts are. As the, as the property owner suggested, going to the neighborhood commercial because it just seems like that whole. Four way right there. Would be concentrated in businesses and neighborhood commercial. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, except to the, to the north of that.
Mm-hmm.
Is all residential.
It is, yeah.
Right, okay, right. And that's just continuation on that side of Daphne Street. That's.
On the east side of Daphne.
Why that?
Yeah.
That makes sense to me. This is not a make or break situation for me. I'm saying that makes sense.
I understand.
And ought to be considered. I just like the the fact that. We already have, I I believe that's Adventist Health right there. The PO? The small, the, yeah. That's, yeah, that's. Is that Adventist Health?
Yes.
And. I think with Adventist Health right there, if it, whatever medical office it is, I think would might be better suited for neighborhood commercial, but.
So I'm the opposite. I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm almost thinking keep it medium density on the east side. Cause that's that small little. Lot there. But I do want to lean towards. I get what, I get what we're saying commissioners. I do want to lean towards the person that actually has. Invested. And owns and has some kind of interest in the property. And our interest, of course, is the same. And our interest, of course, is the city as a whole, I understand.
And that's kind of my my way of thinking too, because it could go either either or.
Yeah.
But if it if it could go either or, then I. I I. Would tend to wanna lean toward the uh. The owner.
And the commissioners, what's again, uh the thoughts that. Where they already have is they want to propose. High density. What are your thoughts on keeping it high density or going to medium density as the owner or the owner's representative has stated?
Can I can I make it?
Yeah.
The person who spoke was not the owner of the site.
Oh, was the.
His neighbor.
A neighbor. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
That was. What? Oh.
Proposed high density.
You're the owner of the site? Okay. Yes. Okay. Yes, we when we spoke to the property owner, he was in favor of the high density.
Oh, he was in favor of the high density?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry about that. Thank you. Any more discussion?
My concerns are not about the high density.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, we closed public comment, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, we've closed public comment on that. Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Nobody else wants to read these, huh? You're in the rule. Yeah, okay, so. I wanna I wanna make the motion, but I wanna make it where. Where we uh. Change the two parcels. Along Daphne to neighborhood commercial.
Instead of the medium density residential.
Yeah, right, you're right. Do you know the APN numbers for the day? Yeah. Oh, it's right here, isn't it? Is it zero three seven and zero three zero?
Yes.
I think those are it.
Yes.
So it's gonna be. Oops. Oh, that's the different one here. Let me show you on my. Let me show you on them. It'll be these two right there. It'll change. See, it says medium density.
Okay.
Neighborhood commercial right there, number eight.
So we um. A a motion, um we recommend adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three. With, can I say that again? Sorry. With the. The changing. Twenty. Zero two three zero two zero zero three seven. And zero two three zero. Two zero zero three zero from medium density to uh neighborhood commercial.
All right, do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, we have a first and a second. Like to take a vote. On the changes to item number eight. I'll just clarify it real quick, quick one more time. From proposed medium density to neighborhood commercials, APN zero two three dash zero two zero dash zero three seven. And zero two three dash zero two zero dash zero three zero. To neighborhood commercial. Vote, um Commissioner Eschgon.
Hi.
Commissioner Brewer.
Hi.
Commissioner Clement.
Hi.
Commissioner Mead.
No.
And Commissioner Couch votes yes.
Hi. Oh, that's good. Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion passes. Okay, number nine, zone map change number two zero two three dash zero five in general plan amendment number two zero two three dash zero five. Initiated by the city of Lamoore to eliminate the mixed use designation and MU zoning from the general plan of zoning maps west of state route forty-one. In the vicinity of College Avenue.
Yeah, these sites are, excuse me, on the north side of Bush Street, um across the street from the college. Um, there's, it looks like there's a number of parcel there. There's, it's really just all the different zones and um. There's really only three property owners, one of them being the city, which owns the. The site that has the tank and the water treatment uh. Equipment. Excuse me, if you go down, so. There's mixed use area there, there's. The area along the railroad tracks. That's the blue is community facilities. Neither Christie nor I could figure out why that was ever there because that's owned privately by um. By someone, I actually spoke to her this morning. So. Besides the city site. The. What's proposed for medium density residential is um. Owned by the same owner that has the Victor Village subdivision, the one that's been. Continuing for, I think we're at seventeen years, so um. And then the the north side is is another is a different property owner. I've spoken to both of them. And once I explained to them what we're doing, they both said they were supportive of the change. So the orange again would be medium density residential, the yellow is um low density residential.
So on this one is just a little bit of mixed use change? That one area right there?
Yeah, it's removing the mixed use and moving the community facilities to where we. Think they should have been in the first place.
Oh, gotcha, to low density.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
We don't, we didn't understand why there was medium density residential on the city well site. So that's obviously it was a mapping error. We're trying to fix that.
Yeah. Okay. Like to open it for public comment for item number, I believe it was eight at six twenty-nine PM. Any public comment questions? Okay, doesn't look like we have any. Christie, was there anything? No emails or anything like that on that? Okay. I will then close. Oh. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, uh commissioners, I'm Commander Finley, executive officer at Naval Air Station Lamoore. Uh, coming on here with my team, I got sent to work as our liaison. I have a Mark Stack who is our air ops officer. And I have Sam Lee, who is our public works officer. I just wanna ask the. Commissioners, if if you have any questions about our air operations over. This area. Because we understand the use or the change of this is to get. Homes to go there. Now, we all wanna be good stewards and good neighbors with Lamoore. And if we, now I have no recommendations. But I'm asking you, do you have questions about what we do over these parcels of land? That. The potential homeowners will live through.
Any questions?
I guess my question, can you uh? You know, go into more detail, kind of explain, you know, you you came here. To obviously give us that information, so.
Do you mind if I have Mark Stack, my air operations officer, just explain the flight path that goes over this area?
Yeah, we'd love it.
That'd be great.
Sure will. Mark Stack. So at that location, the typical pattern that we fly is normally flown at twenty-eight hundred feet. And that's an arrival pattern uh into one of our runways, our eastern runway. In the event we have bad weather, uh and we're landing towards the south. That becomes our departure runway. And if we have aircraft that go missed approach and typically during that time of year. They will come off and then our pattern alter altitude lowers to eighteen hundred feet. And the reason we do that stagger uh of twenty-eight and eighteen hundred feet is we have two parallel runways set up that are. Align to the northwest. And with those runways, what that affords us to do by staggering those altitudes is turn on. Airplanes simultaneously, and that still protects the aircraft from each other and builds that thousand-foot separation. So. That's what that airspace and and the importance it is to our airfield and getting the planes in and out safely. Any questions?
Is the base concerned about noise when you talk about rival and departure?
Yes.
Yeah.
We are, uh, we are concerned of noise now. It wouldn't be the first time, nor it's gonna be the last time for us to get noise complaints, okay? Um, but. Just like I said, I got no recommendation either way. We have more people living there. It would be people to get more. Noise complaints from our normal flight path and we're, I'm just saying, that's a. Uh, if we do change things, get homes there, that's something that uh I hope doesn't. Harness our neighborhood or our friendly. Working atmosphere of Lamoore at all, when there might be some people living there that may not like us flying overhead of them. We've looked at adjusting the pattern uh and. We would have to adjust it over more people uh that live in Lamoore, and we don't wanna do that. Like I said, I got no recommendation, just letting you guys know when this gets pushed up. Yeah. Any questions for me?
Well, I'd have to say I'm probably the opposite of noise complaints. I grew up for eighteen years next to Edwards Air Force Base. I love seeing every new airplane that used to come out of there and um my son who's twelve, when he hears a jet out of. The Lamoore, he runs outside to see which one it is, so. I'm probably the opposite of noise complaints.
I agree. I've been flying out of here since two thousand and six.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm a big fan of this uh area. Uh, but there's also it. We go to the what-ifs and all that, but just letting, make sure the commissioners know what what is happening above those skies or above those potential homes.
All right.
I like to say I've lived here twenty-five years now. I knew. Airplanes existed when I moved here. When I knew they existed. When I bought a house. And they fly over my house. And Bob's house, probably every day.
Yeah.
Sometimes more often than not, depending upon what workups are being done, et cetera. And on the first Thursday in July, in June. They changed the flight pattern. For high school graduation, and then they really come low, and that doesn't bother me much at all either. Most people like that.
Yeah.
I think if you're going to live in this town, if you're going to purchase a home, you need to do so with your eyes open. And think about what it means. To have that base out there. And whether it's an eighteen or thirty-five, they're gonna be loud. And uh, I'm glad they're up there.
No, sir.
And this conversation's been going on. Since before I moved here. Uh, it's probably not gonna be the last time that ever comes up. But I'd say by and large, this is a Navy town. And you've got a lot of support.
Awesome, thank you. That's that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Commissioner Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we buy, if I remember right, when you buy property here in Lamoore, isn't that something that's? Part of the purchase? That you're advised on noise. It's almost like buying property next to a railroad.
You're supposed to be.
Yeah, you're gonna be advised that, hey. Just know that. There's jets that fly over it. If I'm.
I believe also we actually make a recommendation. There was a farm field that was next to a a. Proposed track that we recommended and part of the purchase was there's an active. Farm next to you and there's gonna be dust and everything, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, when you we adopt uh new subdivisions now. We require that the. That there be something placed into the public record, so every time a home is sold. That notice comes up that says. You're you're in an area that's gonna have noise and and dust.
Yeah. Yeah, I gotcha, okay.
So it's not just the first homeowner for the new home, but it should come up every time a home is sold.
Yeah, Steve, I know in the beginning. When when R was first going to build. Were they required to have more insulation? I know there was talk about.
Their re- the requirement is for um. To. For, yeah, more. To insulate and make the the noise level lower in inside, so that can be done with insulation and different window types. And so that is, that is a requirement.
I thought so.
So actually, I'd like to, any more public comment or anything like that? And you, okay, like to close public comment at six thirty-six. And again, sorry, didn't mean to cut anybody off, but now it's open up if we have any questions about the installation and everything. Is a building inspector for another city. Trust me, with the new energy codes, there is more insulation now in homes than you could have ever imagined, and it's quiet in there, so, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have just one comment.
Yes.
I've lived here all my life. And I've seen from the base being built. What's going on this day? And the sound that I hear is the sound of freedom. That's all that I'm gonna say.
Thank you. If I can make a comment, I understand the basis concern. They wanna be good neighbors. They do. I think their concern is uh it just takes one or two homeowners to really um make complaints and and. Can kind of cause problems sometimes. I understand that, but. Again, I'm I'm grateful for them. They uh not only is it just great that they're out there. With service, but. Um, the economic boom to the city can never be measured almost, so. But. Any other comments, questions? With the commissioners? If not, I would like to open up for a motion. On item number, see, are we on number nine?
Yes.
Number nine.
Well, somebody else. Will I move the um? Item number. Uh, concerning the um. Naval Air Station uh flyovers.
Make a motion for just number nine? Want to say that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I'll second that.
Have a second, okay? All right, so we have a first and a second on item number nine. Let's do a roll call, uh Commissioner. Clement.
Hi.
Commissioner Mead.
Hi.
Commissioner Brewer.
Hi.
And Commissioner Eschgon.
Hi.
And Commissioner Couch votes I as well. All right, moving on to number ten. Zone text amendment number two zero two three dash zero one changes initiated by the city of Lamoore to modify sections nine dash two A dash seven dash one. Planning permit and entitlements and review and appeal authority. Nine dash two B dash twelve minor site plan and architectural review. And do I have to read all of that?
Well. I'll go through it.
Number, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so this one gets more technical. This isn't about a map change. This is about changes to the actual text of the zoning ordinance, and so. We went through Chris, Christie and I, we had a number of discussions, um most of them were like in the spring. Um, where we just looked through the code and looked for, and you know, she was able to provide a lot of insight as to what she sees at the counter. Every day, um what types of codes are tripping people up. And and I was looking for things and and bringing in. My experiences from other cities and seeing how they do things versus how maybe Lamoore does things. And the goal for all of these is to find ways to streamline the process to get us more in line with. Um, what the what the housing market wants to build. And and but to do it in a way that. We're we're still, this is still Lamoore. So. Um, so there's a number of changes throughout the code. I'm gonna go through each one. I'm just gonna touch on it. If you want to talk about it in detail, we can do that. So the first one is about uh. The appeal authority, and that's mainly just. Changing the table to confirm that. When a stat, when the staff makes a decision, anyone can appeal that to the planning commission. So um. That that's just common. I think it was implied, but we wanted to make it clear in the in the code. Um. The next thing was dealing with um, site plan review and architectural review. So currently for number and for this, let's le- at least as long as I've been working in Lamoore. We've had a two-tiered system for site plan review, so there's major site plan review and minor site plan review, and there's there's specifics about the thresholds uh, between minor and what constitutes minor and what constitutes major. Um, for commercial, it has to do with certain square footage of building, um, for residential, the um, if it's a certain number of units that um, would be minor versus major, so. Um. The, the main difference is that the major site plan reviews come before you and you make the final decision as to whether staff is interpreting the, the code correctly. Um, there really is not supposed to be discretion in site plan review. It's meant to be a review of the project that's on the table and how it complies or does not comply with all of the city's codes. And when we talk about city codes, it's not just the planning codes, it's also uh, the, the building codes is related to site plan, fire, police takes a look at it. Uh, Parks Department takes a look at it, so, so all the departments look at the site plans and then um, send in comments, which Christie then gathers together and puts into what we call the site plan comments that go back to the, to the property or to the, the developer. And then uh, they make changes based on those comments so that their site plan then can be in conformance with all the city's codes. So the, the main change that we're making is to just have one level of site plan review and that it would all be at the staff level. So, um, you would think, okay, so what's the planning commission gonna do now? Um, there's still gonna be a number of projects that have to come to the planning commission because they need something besides site plan review. If they need a conditional use permit, if they need a tentative map, if they need a zone change or a general plan amendment, they're gonna be coming to you. Um, but if it's just, um, just a, a new development that meets the zoning, meets the development standards, then the staff will work with them and will take care of them, and it won't need to come to planning commission. That's gonna save the developer time. Um, and it um, saves staff time as well. Um, so there's, um, there's a table in your staff report that looks at site plans that were approved in the last seven years and shows that, you know, the ones that table in the column on the left, or the table column in the middle shows which ones went to planning commissions and which ones were approved by staff, and then
Right.
The column on the right shows, here's what would happen if this, if this change had been in effect the last ten years. Which one still would have gone to planning commission and which ones could have just been approved by staff? So you kind of get a sense of, of some of these, so. Um. Um, yeah. So that is that, and again, I, I would say that this is a this is in line with what other cities are, are doing that have a site plan review process similar to Lamoore's. The next change has to do with the, um, the allowed land uses. There's the table, uh, the large ta- that one there. We made a few changes. Let's go up one right there. Um. The, the, one of the max. Oh, so some of the change, we changed the, we've talked about the, um, was it SB nine, where people can take their lot and get it split in two without going through uh, the normal process that we would expect. That was a state law that, that we have to follow, so we, so we just put that in the code, acknowledging that the government code for that area is, is listed there. Um, so, um, we're not making big changes of the code. We're just saying, hey, if somebody wants to do it, it's allowed and we'll follow the state law and, and let you do it. Um, but I'm gonna bring that back up again at our next item when we talk about the subdivision ordinance. The other one is um, at the bottom, we're adding a new use called short-term rental unit. Most people would refer to that as an Airbnb or maybe a verbo unit. And um, that just was not listed in our code at all. Um, obviously, it's a relatively newer use. And so we wanted to put that in, and, and this is the one difference from the study sessions that we had. We had this listed as permitted only in the residential zones and then not permitted in the commercial and office zones. Um, we looked at that again recently and said, you know, there are some commercial zones where you could do this if you had a residential unit and, um, so we made it a conditional use, so they need to get a conditional use permit to have an Airbnb in, in the commercial zones. Um, so that's one difference from what we had in the study session packets. Uh, but there, again, not a, not a lot of cha- big changes. Um. The next one, which is probably, this one's probably the, I would say the the most significant text change that we're proposing and is talking about minimum lot size for single-family residences, so currently, the code says that the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet. Um. But it also says in other places that you can, that the developer can ask for a planned unit development or a PUD um, to go less than seven thousand square feet. Well, most developers these days are wanting to do less than seven thousand square feet, so almost every project we've had um, has needed a PUD. Um, other cities and looking around, they've the sta- the standard that I kind of started in when I started in planning was six thousand square feet, um, since then, um, several cities have gone even lower than that as their standard lot minimum. Uh, Visalia went to five thousand square feet. Um. Fresno went down to four thousand square feet, which I think is a little too tight uh, without additional review. Uh, Tulare is looking at uh, forty-five hundred square feet. That's gonna be proposed to them um, later this year. Um. So what we're proposing is that we change it to five thousand square feet. That gets you a fifty by one hundred square foot lot. Um, this the home sizes really have, aren't changing in areas that I've seen this type of neighborhood, um. And the developers have all kind of adjusted their home plans to fit that type of lot, so, um. It doesn't mean that you can't have a smaller lot than that, and in fact, we're gonna probably, we're not probably, we're going to bring you a project next month that's gonna be even smaller than the five thousand, but obviously they need a PUD to do that. So the difference here is that if you've got lots that are between five thousand and seven thousand, whereas you would have needed a PUD before, now you would not need one, you'd only need a tentative map um, to, to get through the process. And then there's, oh, the design standards there. We've made some change, so we, so the table is, is where the lot sizes are shown. And then we've made some other changes to setbacks to adjust to, to the five thousand square foot lot. Uh, probably the biggest one is, um, the code says that in the side yard, if you have a two-story, the side yard setback should be ten feet instead of five, and so we've changed, we're proposing to change it so that it would just be five, regardless of whether you have single-story or two-story home. And that again is, is pretty common in other cities now. I think that's everything I've got unless Christie corrects me. Oh, I see. I knew that you'd catch me. Um, so, um, we've redone the accessory dwelling unit uh, rules, and that's mainly in response to changes in state law, uh, the state, uh, there's, there's gotta be somebody in Sacramento who thinks that accessory dwelling units are the savior for the housing crisis because they've pretty much made it so we have to allow them everywhere. Um, so uh, we've made the changes. There's, there's now not just ADUs, but there's junior ADUs. And then we have the tiny homes, so we have standards for all of those. There are, the standards that we're proposing are in accordance with the state law, and we put it into a table to try to make it easier for people to understand the differences when Christie works with them at the counter.
Hey, Steve, can I ask real quick?
Yeah.
You talked about the state law with the ADUs. Let's say it's a detached backyard ADU.
Mm-hmm.
Once that's built, are you saying that state law says they can split that property without regards to going below the minimum lot size?
Correct.
You're kidding?
Nope.
So there's nothing?
The look on your face was the look on mine when I first read that law.
I just can't. I mean, does it have to meet a certain setback requirement?
Yeah, they have to have a four-foot setback.
Four? Okay. That's state law, nothing anybody can do about that.
Can't, there's nothing we can do about it. The one thing that we are doing, I'll talk about when we talk about the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Another question?
Yeah.
Um, with ten feet between two-story house?
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna still require fence down the middle, which would theoretically be five feet from the wall? We know it's not gonna be that wide, uh, for all kinds of reasons. So we, you can maybe get a lawnmower or a garbage can through those places.
Right. You can at five feet. Once it gets down to four, it gets, it gets dicey. So I've, I, I have recommended approval of some neighborhoods at four feet in the past. One of them was just a, was, what, about eight years ago? And I, I don't think I would do it anymore. It's just, there's when, when you, when you look back at it and you look at how that neighborhood's working, it's, it, it's kind of a, it's a pain, but five feet is pretty common in a lot of areas. Uh, you can't do much in it, but, but you can get, you can get past and you can, you can set down your trash can and you can walk around it. And that's about it.
I'm thinking if somebody wants to put a pool in their yard.
They wouldn't do it in the side yard.
To get from the street to the backyard, since you can't put it in the front yard.
Yeah.
Uh, the filter and the heater and the pump and all that stuff. Is that gonna, that's gonna take a crane then to lift it over the top of the house and the fence to get it back there. Cause I've measured mine. I know how wide that stuff is. And that's not gonna cut it.
Well, as, as somebody that inspects pools every day, they take them in pieces and they take them to the back now.
Put it together.
And they now have backhoes that can fit down those little five-foot side yards. It's
crazy.
Where, where there's a will, there's a way, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a, I had a tree rem- uh, two trees removed a couple of years ago in my backyard, and I was surprised, the little, the the very powerful stump remover machine. It was, it was pretty narrow. It would, it could fit everywhere.
Jeez. Okay.
Okay, we're ready for public.
Um, and then the
I think so.
The other one had to do with, um, the uh, home occupations, right? It's not on this one? No, we didn't. Oh, we're gonna bring that in the future. So that's, I think that is everything that I've got on this. We make, we are making some changes to daycare, the definitions of daycare, and that's because of changes in state law. So that's a minor thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Like to open up for public comment, for our public, public comment for item number ten. If there's anybody in the audience that has any questions, concerns, please step forward. Oh, sorry, open public comment, pardon, at six fifty-five. Christie, is there anything email sent in, anything like that? Nope. Okay, I will turn around and actually close public comment at six fifty-five PM and open it for discussion among commissioners. So Commissioner, sometimes a hot topic discussion always comes up, right? It's the five-foot setbacks on the sides. I do go out and I do inspect buildings every day. I will say that the developers do a good job of offsetting windows, so you're not staring off at somebody else. But I think on that, what amazes me is there's still a market for that. They can't keep those homes in stock, so. I actually would be for it, yeah.
Well, I, I'm kind of, I hated to see it go down from the seven thousand. And I really believe the only reason there's a market for it is because that's all there is.
Yeah, that's all they're putting out there.
If you don't have any other options, I've, I've got two or three, or three friends that are realtors. Every one of them has told me the first thing they ask for is a large lot.
Hmm.
And then if they can't get it, they go down, but, um, and I s- I still have a hard time believing that developer, you know, I know they wanna put more units in the land that they have. And then some of them say, well, we, we can't make any money if we don't. I'm kind of like, well, maybe you're in the wrong business if you can't, if you're cutting your profit margin that close. And, or maybe you need to look at the way they do it, but that's the only really i- issue I have. I could see maybe going down to six thousand, but I really have a hard time with seeing five.
Yeah, um, I promise I have no dog in the fight or anything like that. When they, I do, when I go out to the subdivisions or we call them tracks and we look, not every single house would be, every lot would be at five thousand.
Right.
Have corner lots, cul-de-sacs and stuff like that.
That you have to have.
But you are right, I do believe those go first, like
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah, they want to buy those first. Those are the premium lots.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So Steve, there's a market for it, but as my fellow commissioner is saying, if that's all there is, that's why there's a market. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, I guess my first, my first thought is it's a minimum, so we're not stopping the developers from building bigger lots. They're, for some reason, they're choosing not to, and they haven't been doing it since the recession. They're in, in, prior to like two thousand six, two thousand seven, most developers had what they called uh, two levels of, of neighborhoods. There was the, and what they most of them called them entry level and move up. And it was based on who they were targeting. They're, the lower, the smaller lots, smaller homes were targeting entry level home buyers, and the larger lots with nicer homes, they were targeting move up, which is somebody who already has a home and wants to get into a better home. So the move-up market, the, you didn't see that, the, the, the major home builders, Lennar, San Joaquin Valley Homes, Dear Horton, they, um, they only had one type of product, not two anymore, so, um. I was waiting for that to come back, just as an observer. And then the interest rates changed last year, and so now it's like, well, that's, it's not gonna come back anytime soon. Uh, because now they're struggling with adjusting to the interest rate change.
Questions, comments, commissioners? So let's say if we're to stay at seven thousand, talk, what is the difficulty of getting a PUD? To go down to five, it comes before the planning commission?
Comes before the planning commission. It also, well, the, the the biggest difference is if you only need a map, it would only, it would, the decision would stop with the planning commission. The council wouldn't see it. So because the PUD is an, is technically an ordinance change that has to go to the council because because each PUD is adjusting the minimum lot size, setbacks, other things that are in the zoning ordinance. So it's like every one of them gets special compensation. Not compensation, not the right word, special dispensation, so, um, so it's it's, it's an extra step, it's extra time for the developer. It's also extra, um, organization at the staff level because now instead of one setback that we remember for the city, we have probably twenty where we have to look up each time, well, what's the setbacks for this neighborhood? So, that's the difference. So that's the difference. You may think those aren't important differences, but um I'm I'm just looking at, you know, our again, our goal when we started this project was how can we find ways to streamline the development process? And this was one of them.
Yeah, I completely understand that.
Okay. So the lot width will still be a minimum of fifty feet across the front and a minimum of hundred foot depth. Okay. Not still. I'm saying that's what it'll be. Can't go lower than fifty feet unless it comes to the commission.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other public, I mean, uh, comments, suggestions from the commission? Well, for item number ten, I'd like to open, see if there's any any motions.
Well, it's hard to argue with state law, whether you like it or not.
Yeah.
Beating a dead horse.
And yeah, not to scare you, but there's there's thirty more bills this session.
Doesn't surprise me.
Related to housing and cities.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not too concerned about that part because I know there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah. What we're trying to do, what we're trying to do with that is is reset our code so that the, cause the public doesn't care, like the the, like, our code needs to be consistent with state law.
Right.
Mainly for legal reasons, but also just to make it easier to talk to people and point to stuff and say, this is the code.
Anybody like to make a motion for item number ten? Go ahead. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number ten as the text says. We have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, second pick. Okay, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Eschagon.
No.
And Commissioner Couch votes aye, or to pass the motion passes. All right, we are on to number eleven. Zone tax amendment number two zero two three dash zero two, changes initiated by the city of Lamore to modify sections of Title Eight Building and Development Regulations, Chapter Seven Land Division of the City Ordinance in a way that'll encourage more housing development in Lamore. Take it away, Steve.
Okay, so this is the subdivision ordinance, which is a different part of the municipal code. So uh, the main difference between the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance is the zoning ordinance regulates how something should be built as well as the process for getting it approved. The subdivision ordinance only deals with process. It tells us how, what is the process when somebody wants to divide land, when somebody wants to change property lines? So it only has to do with property lines and how to go about changing them. So um the state has a law called the Subdivision Map Act. Um, it's pretty thorough. It talks about each type of of land division. It talks about the difference between a parcel map and a subdivision map. Um, the main difference being the number of lots that you can only divide into five lots in a parcel map. Uh, or sorry, four and a remainder, but um and then anything higher than that needs a subdivision map. And there are different rules for parcel maps and subdivision maps. Um, if you recall the project at um Cinnamon and Nineteenth, where we had a discussion about how much improvement do they have to make? Um, because of, because they're dividing the parcel, like what, how how much of the road do they have to put in? When do they have to put in the sewers? And so parcel map, um where the city's not, is in generally speaking, the city can't uh require the improvements ahead of development. So the development, the improvements we've made when somebody pulls a building permit to build something on the site subdivision. The developers required to do improvement plans and bond for them and and um before the final map can be approved so that there's um so that if the improvements don't get made, the city has a bond and the city can finish the improvements so that lots have streets that can get to them. Um, that's kind of all background to show you examples of like why the subdivision map is import subdivision ordinance is important. So the the other difference is the subdivision ordinance doesn't get a lot of love. Um, it it's usually ignored by cities and they usually just kind of do what they're gonna do and don't really follow the code. Uh, because the code's outdated. We, when I, when we were first looking at changes to make, I was looking at, well, who's who around here has done an update to their subdivision ordinance lately? Nobody. Um, it's just not done. Um, although I should say, since we started, um, we've gotten some cities that that have asked us to to do this for them. Um, so what I did here was I first had um our surveyors at QK look at the subdivision ordinance because um they're the ones that are reviewing the maps for you and making recommendations back to Frank on changes to the final map. So I asked them, look at, well, what things in this ordinance are tripping you up? Like, what do things do you have to follow? Cause they follow the code. And they were, what things would make it easier for you? And so they went through and they did the whole underlying strikeout for the code, and that's what you've got before you is is changes that the surveyors have made saying this is what would make things work better for the process. Cause again, this is all about process. And and how to get something through the process, what telling the telling the developer, here's the things you have to have on the map. Here's the things you don't have. Here's how it needs to be said, things like that. Um. One of the things I mentioned earlier is that SB nine where you can divide property without going through a tentative map process, even if you don't meet the minimum lot size. We added a whole chapter in here that says, that recognizes that, says, yeah, the state says you can do that. But you still have to follow all of the surveyors' best practices when you do that, which means we're gonna make you set property corners. We're gonna do everything that that we that that a surveyor would expect to find so that they can adequately identify that parcel from now until eternity with the, you know, using surveying practices. So that was one thing we noticed in the state law that they didn't really talk about is like, well, what about the technical surveyor issues? And so we put those in there in our code, saying that if if that ever happens, you still have to follow um surveyors' best practices. Um, some other changes. We made some changes to lot line adjustments to make it conform more to what we've been doing. Um. We made some changes to what's called a voluntary parcel merger. So that's um, that's if somebody owns two parcels and they wanna merge them into one parcel. That's probably the easiest process, and so we made it even easier so that that would go flow through fairly quickly. Um, the the part I was telling about with the state law, we're calling that an urban lot split. Um. Um, oh, and one of the things we did was we re- we added a requirement for developers to submit their maps in uh AutoCAD as well as PDF. And that's gonna make it easier for us to keep up our GIS system, cause we'll have that that electronic data. Um, that's pretty much everything. Again, it's it's technical wonky stuff, but it, but the surveyors say this would make things a lot better. And actually, they said that uh the ordinance wasn't that bad to begin with compared to some other cities. So um, I guess kudos to us, but um now, now they'll, it'll be a place where they, they feel like it can, it can work really well for them. And maybe we won't have to look at it for twenty years. I don't know that there's anything controversial in it, but if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay. No. Okay. Right. Open to the public, item number eleven at seven eleven PM. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns? Hey, doesn't look like any comment from the public. Christie, anything on your side? No. All right, we'll close public comment at seven twelve PM. Commissioners, concerns, questions?
No.
Seems straightforward.
Yeah, it does.
They say the best for last.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Okay, there's no questions, comments, or anything like that. Commissioners? Do I have a motion on item number eleven?
I'll make the motion. We recommend to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Recommending the approval of the ordinance text amendment number twenty twenty-three dash zero two in accordance with the findings in the resolution.
Gotcha.
Second.
Sorry, who was that second? Okay.
Mead.
All right, and let's take a vote. So Commissioner Eschagon.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
And Commissioner Couch votes aye as well. Motion pass. All right, moving on to item number twelve, directors report.
And Christie's got a few things she wanted to say, but first I wanted to say, uh, I wanted to thank everybody from the public that's here that came out tonight. Um, this is why we have hearings so that people can come and express their opinion. And as you saw, it it actually changed some some things slightly. So appreciate that. Um, all of these items are gonna be going to the city council on September fifth uh for final adoption. Um, so thank you and thanks to the commissioners going through this. And thank you to Christie. She she and we spent a lot of time, we, she she forgot, we spent a lot of time in the spring going through all of these things. Figuring out what do we want to propose? So um, yeah.
So just really quick, um, Nathan's not here tonight. Um, but we had talked about um having an applicant um receiving an application for a conditional use permit to have a liquor store over at one sixty-one West Tamfordum Rona Road.
What kind of store? Sorry.
A liquor store.
Oh, okay.
Where Goodwill used to be. Um, the uh oh, part of what he was going to be asking, he only wanted a portion of that unit. And so um he insisted on on submitting his application and ultimately could not come to terms with the leasing agent, property owner to create an extra unit. So he's withdrawn his application. He's looking for another property. Um, but I just want to let you know, we won't be bringing that to you, cause um he withdrew his application this week. Um, regarding the affordable housing project at Smith and D Street, I did get notification that it looks like they're going to receive their funding. Everything's going well, so you probably will see um by the end of the year, they'll they'll know what, how much funding they're getting, and that was for the onsite and offsite improvements. Um, and so you should start seeing um construction. They should, they'll be getting their building permits and all that around um June of two thousand twenty-four. So um, and then um, we're working with several, three that I know of. Um, for sure, we're working with um several commercial industrial type businesses that want to either um relocate or expand their business to Lamore. And um in the uh regional commercial industrial zones, Highway forty-one, one ninety-eight area. So that's exciting. Um, those look like um they'll potentially happen. Um, they're still confidential, so I can't talk about it much more, but um, and then staff are proposing to hold a study session again as soon as we can get ready. Um. Probably I'm thinking I'm gonna give him rest, so I'm thinking October. Um, we'll bring back some more changes to the zoning code. Um, we had um something come up with our tree preservation code. Um, there's some trees on the list that we're not certain that they they necessarily need to be on that list and and how we handle that. We just wanna clean it up a little bit. Um, home occupation permits, we wanna, there's a few things that come across to our desk on a daily basis, and we kinda wanna get um yours and city council's view on maybe cleaning that up a little bit. Um, updated, um semi-permanent mobile food vendors, the taco trucks. Um, we wanna maybe clean that up just a little bit. It's it's pretty clear cut, but there are a few things that um that we think maybe we might wanna suggest changing. Um, other than that, I, Steve always gives me kudos, but honestly, I'm gonna cry here. Um, he does a great job and um, you know, we're working, it's just he and I, Nathan does a great job overseeing everything, but um, I think we make a great team and he's definitely an asset to our city. So I'd just like to say that. And I would like to thank you for listening to all of these. I think, did it work out better, uh separating everything? Do you think it worked out better? I thought it went a lot smoother and you could, and everybody could get up for their actual item. So good. Yeah. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, last but not least, commissioners, reports, requests, comments?
Well, I was gonna thank everybody for coming, but they left, so.
I know, I wish they could stay. I was like, wait, there's still more. Wanted to thank the Navy guys for coming.
Yeah, but it was, like you said, it was nice to have people come in and give their opinion. That's what we're, that's what this is for.
With that, we did have a meeting with um the Navy in between while we were doing this, it was maybe two weeks ago. I think we did meet with them and had a very good conversation and and we think that we'll be able to work with them.
It's about more than just.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was definitely about, you know, it was about, yeah, yeah. So I think that um they've got some new, the gentleman, one of the gentlemen, I'm not sure to tell you truth, what his position was and but um he's only been here three weeks, so things were kinda new to him. Um, but it was a very good conversation. And so I think that um things are, well, you saw they didn't really, they didn't fight it necessarily. Um, didn't fly over or anything like that. They they seem to, you know, and really that section, we were just cleaning up. That, like, that one uh property had, what, six? Four, five zones on it, and it's one property. If somebody ever wants to develop it, no matter what they wanna develop it for.
Yeah.
They'd have to do a zone change.
Since since Christie brought up the meeting with Navy, I'll add one thing that I thought was important for the commission is they they kind of said we're not planning on building any more housing onsite, but we have a need for housing. So they're expecting the city to meet that need.
Mm hmm.
So there's a little bit of irony there.
Yeah.
And they they do want housing, it's just they're concerned about that corridor that's right over the college.
Yeah, and I I I get that, you know, I don't wanna be the one answering phone calls. You know, hey, you guys are too noisy. I, you know, I understand their.
I think one thing, and I'm, I don't wanna make promises for Nathan, but I think one thing I heard him kind of say he was gonna look into is a way that the city can do more about notifying people promoting, like, talking about the noise, but in a positive way.
Yeah.
Um, and making sure that nobody's caught off guard when they hear the noise. They're not surprised. Cause they shouldn't be.
No, it's interesting. Sometimes they fly over and it's almost a whisper and other times whatever they're doing, it's making a lot of noise.
Oh, they're hitting those afterburners.
Almost they're saying, hey, I'm gonna be coming by about ten thirty, whoever their buddy is.
Well, I I mean.
You know, I think they do, they do different workups, like the way they plan their workups. They try it. They're not doing like I don't know what the correct verbiage would be, but they're not doing high intense maneuvers at night. If they are, they're not doing them over town. I mean, it's happened before, but most of the time at night, it's just a general, like, you'll hear them, but it's like he says, soft. But there's times during the day, yeah, you can tell they're, they're doing some some maneuvers, so.
But yeah, they, they were, in the meeting, they were very clear in saying that. The reason why they're bringing these things up now is because their, their sister sites on the east coast. Have been completely enveloped by, by urban development.
And the same thing.
They've had to, they've had to actually change their training patterns because of the noise complaints. And that, you know, I, I get, I mean, I get that, why would you want to change your training pattern? And then you have to go out to sea, and now you have to do it the real way, and you haven't trained for it. So, so they, they're looking at, Lamoore is the premier. Place to train because we haven't approached on them yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they need to remember that we, it's gonna be hard. For Lamoore to ever go much farther than what we're talking, because Marsh Drive is called that for a reason.
Yes. So, yes.
Comment about, uh, trees. Hmm, I've been driving around town quite a bit lately, you know, gas is outrageous and expensive, uh. There are a lot of places where sidewalks have become pyramids because of trees. And street sweepers can't move water because it doesn't run uphill. And this, this isn't just one or two places in town. It's all over, like twenty, thirty of them. We need to make sure we're not planting trees that lift sidewalks and lift curbs and gutters and lift streets. And then try to make the homeowner pay for all those repairs. I got to do that a few years ago.
Me too.
It's not getting any better, besides the fact that it's dangerous.
Yeah.
And I don't know where the city is in addressing that, I mean, they can't be oblivious to it. They just can't be. I mean, they did one great job on Fox Street on one side of the street. Not on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
That's an example of what can be done and has worked very, very effectively. I don't know whether it's just because they ran out of money or what, but, uh, it stopped. And, uh, there are a lot of places in town that need attention.
Yeah, just where, wherever they. Are letting them put the park strips in, then they're required to put two trees in the strip. And then, any of the neighborhoods you see eventually, that's what happens and.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to see somewhere where the city decides, you know what? We gotta quit allowing that because. I, I've seen it at city council years ago when they were first talking about, because people found out the city didn't. Wasn't responsible for fixing the sidewalk. The homeowner was, and they were sending out notices and. It, that's just bad for everybody.
There's, yeah, there's been different levels of how to enforce that over the years with different department heads that I've seen. Um. The, the only comment I'll make is I'm not an expert in urban forestry, which is what it's usually called. But I've been adjacent to it, and I know that there are some trees that you just don't want to put next to the street. Their, their root structure will eat you up.
Yeah.
And it's guaranteed. There are others that work pretty well, and so we try to. Make those the standard that they had developed, for new projects at least, developers have to put those in. We can't go back with all the previous mistakes that were made about putting the wrong kind of tree in, and Fox was one where. Where it looked great for a while, I'm sure, but it was the wrong kind of tree, too close to the curb.
Yeah.
Well, a few meetings ago, Frank raised the issue that maybe we ought to have a joint study session. And one of the things he talked about was sidewalks, whether we go with monolithic or parkway, should we? Set a standard that it's gonna be one or the other. The other consideration, you know, put the tree in the parkway. Put it in the main part of the yard that's back far enough.
Back far enough.
It's not going to.
Infect any of them.
Yeah, impact the, the driveways, curb, gutters, sidewalks. Uh, we, we gotta get our act together on something like that.
Maybe with the short, of the front of the lot, we can go down from two street trees to one. Or call it still a street tree, as long as it's ten feet back, there's always things we can do.
There's things like that.
Root barriers planted along the trees, that'll push those roots down below the side.
And after that meeting, I, frankly, I live in the same subdivision, fifty-eight homes there. They all had two trees.
Yeah.
There are ten trees out of fifty-eight homes.
Still there, that's it.
Still there. And, and some of those are just, are new ones that have been replanted. There are places like mine where the empties just died, so I didn't replant, and I think nobody on my street.
Right.
Did that. And, and the sidewalks aren't coming up, and, and curb and gutter's not coming up.
Yeah.
I think we need to address something like.
I, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I'd just like to say thank you. I wish they were here. Thank you, everybody that came. We love hearing from the public. I don't want to sound like a weird guy, but I look forward to these meetings because I get to see my friends over here, even if. Sometimes they, I might vote yes, they vote no. But I feel like they're my once a month friends. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, and I hope. When this all passes, goes to city council, you guys have a party. And you guys see a little styrofoam tombstone that has M U on it, and you're gonna put that thing to rest, okay? Put it to rest, it's dead, you got rid of it, it doesn't exist in the city anymore, and I appreciate it. And let's adjourn at seven twenty-seven P M.